My name is Mary Zeller, Voter Services Vice President of the League of Women Voters Gross Point. Tonight's forum is a joint production of the League of Women Voters Detroit and the League of Women Voters Gross Point. The League of Women Voters is providing this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are neither endorsed nor opposed by the League. Also, the League does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at the forum. I'm pleased to welcome the candidates for the First District Wayne County Commission. All candidates for this position are invited to participate in this forum. Tonight, we have two candidates for the Wayne County Commissioner, First District, Mr. Brian Banks and Mr. Tim Colleen. This event is being recorded and will be available to be viewed on the Detroit League's website and YouTube and the Gross Point League's YouTube, Facebook, and website. Questions from the public have been gathered from both League's websites and Facebook pages, from local newspapers and from tonight's participants. League members have sorted the questions and have eliminated irrelevant, redundant, and slanderous questions. I would like to introduce the following Gross Point League members who are serving the following roles. Sue Acton, President of Gross Point League of Women Voters. Our timekeeper, Sarah Coats, Gross Point League of Women Voters Vote One Coordinator. Our Zoom tech coordinators are Vicki Granger and Lori Kingsbury, League of Women Voter Members. The League of Women Voters is a national organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens and government. The League neither endorses nor opposes candidates or political parties. We welcome those age 16 or older to join our membership. Now, our moderator, Sue Acton, will outline the format for the evening and lead tonight's forum. Sue?
Thank you, Mary, and good evening. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters of Gross Point. The format was received and reviewed by all candidates prior to this forum. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make an opening statement, not to exceed two minutes. The order has been determined by drawing lots just prior to this forum. Now, our timer will hold up a card. Please demonstrate to indicate 30 seconds remaining and a card indicating stop when the time has expired. When the time is up, the candidate may finish only the sentence they were currently speaking. Following their opening statements, the candidates will be answering written questions submitted by the public and by League members. Candidates may not make personal attacks on other candidates; such attempts will be cut short. As moderator, I am in charge of the forum at all times and reserve the right to close discussion on a question. Each candidate will have up to one minute to respond. We will rotate the first person to answer each question. At the end, each candidate will have the opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement in reverse order of the opening statements. Having drawn lots, we will now begin with the candidate's opening statement. Each candidate will have two minutes, and Mr. Banks, you will go first.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Brian Banks, and I am a candidate for Wayne County Commission, District One. I hold a PhD from Walden University of Public Policy and Administration, a Juris Doctorate from Michigan State College of Law, and a Master of Education and Bachelor of Science from Wayne State University. I am running because I believe that when every member of our community has an opportunity to contribute to the conversation, we have the ability to create policy that emphasizes with all. Our focus is on improving the quality of life for current residents to provide the necessary support and resources for them to thrive within our county by investing in their mental health, education, job training programs, and affordability, ensuring that equity and inclusion is an active part of our work that has continuous intentional commitment to promote healthy people, healthy communities, and the overall success of present and future generations. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Brian Banks.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, your opening statement.
Thank you to the Detroit and Gross Point Legal Win Voters for sponsoring this forum. I am Tim Colleen and have been representing District One for 16 years. In my view, being a public servant goes hand in hand with the public trust. As elected officials, we are entrusted by citizens to be caretakers and watchdogs over the functions of county government as laid out in the county charter. The duties of the commission include providing oversight of the executive branch by considering and voting on county contracts and approving the annual county budget. Our other main job is to propose and approve county ordinances. I work full-time as your commissioner. I have no outside employment. Keeping up with the hundreds of contracts that come before us each year and making sure they conform to the rules of fair and public expenditures takes a lot of my time. In addition, when it comes to the county budget, my duty is to ensure as best as possible the allocation of taxpayer dollars such a way that we are providing the quality services that citizens have the right to expect. Those county services are laid out in the charter. Over the years, I have proposed and got past several county ordinances. The deficit elimination ordinance has been a valuable tool in keeping expenditures under control as the fiscal year goes on. I was a co-sponsor of the first-ever ethics ordinance for Wayne County, and finally, I authored the county human rights ordinance which filled in the gap in Michigan law for the LGBTQ community. Equal protection for all under the law is a fundamental principle for me. This is my job as I see it. I look forward to the questioning to explore these and other issues in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, you will have our first question. What do you believe is the biggest challenge facing our district in the coming year, and how will you address it?
Our district?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to answer it this way. I think the challenge we have right now in the county is that we are having a difficult time keeping, maintaining, and hiring enough personnel. And that goes to, and those are the services that are being provided in our district. So I think we need to take a very close look at, the wages have been stagnant, people's benefits have withered in the last 15 years, and so unless we can boost up staff, we cannot produce the quality services that our district needs. Of course, the biggest need that we have right now is the seawall in this district. And so that's an ongoing issue and has been ever since I've been in office, but that specifically for this district, that's probably the number-one issue.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, same question.
Thank you. I believe the most pressing issue is to address our deteriorating water infrastructure, which includes our seawall issue as well as our lead service lines. Our seawall issue has been ongoing for a number of years. I believe that it's time to bring the coalition together of the Army Corps of Engineers as well as our congressional delegation and our state legislators and our county officials, as well as our local municipalities to address the seawall issue and getting it repaired. But not only that, keeping our water clean. Our lakes in Michigan are a natural resource, and in recent years, we've run into mass pollution and water contamination, which poses a threat to our ability to access clean, fresh water. And so with that, we have an issue with lead in our service lines, and so we need to address that by developing a funding plan to address our deteriorating water infrastructure.
Thank you. And you will get our first, our second question. If elected, what will, what would be your top priorities in the first 100 days?
Thank you. My top priorities would be increasing funding for mental health services. When we look at the impact that COVID-19 has had on our community, it has affected all of our mental state. We should be investing more in our mental health authority. I have a consulting company, and I do represent Detroit Wayne Integrated Health. We have established some crisis centers that we're opening up, but we need to be really looking at mental health and erasing the stigma that go along with mental health. In addition to that, I would address the over-assessing of tax assessments in the city of Detroit, what they have just experienced, where Detroiters were over-assessed to the tune of $600 million. I also would look at creating a living wage for our county employees, that they would make a wage that would help them to be able to take care of their families, as well as I would, as I stated, deal with our failing infrastructure, as well as invest in public health projects that would address environmental pollution.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, your first 100 days.
Yeah, thank you, and it's going to be an issue that I'm currently working on. The county has had this ethics ordinance for about seven years now. I was on the committee that drafted it. I know the weaknesses that are in that, and we need to have a review of that ordinance to make sure that we have the strongest possible ethics laws for public officials and for county employees and that, that we just have that. So I'm working on that currently, and it's, it's on the top of my agenda right now, among a lot of other things, but.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, you get this question first. Describe the committees you serve on or will serve on when you're elected, Mr. Banks. What in your background makes you suited to this function?
Well, I have served on a couple of committees all 16 years on the commission. One is Health and Human Services, and I spent a decade as its chair. I have served on the Audit Committee, which looks internally at the county, at our functions ever since I have been on the commission. I'm currently sitting on the Senior and Veterans Committee and on the Government Operations Committee. I will also mention under here that the commission has several appointments to other public boards, and I currently am sitting on the Authority Health Board, which provides for on and underinsured in the county for preserving the safety net. For those folks, I chair that board. I spent seven years on the Mental Health Board. I also serve on the Wayne County Health Choice Board, which provides good insurance for small businesses in the county, ACA-compliant, and at reasonable rates. So I serve a lot of functions.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, what committees will you serve on if elected, and what in your background makes you suited to the function?
If elected, I would love to serve on the Health and Human Service Committee as well as the Government Ops Committee, in addition to our Special Committee on Behavior and Health. As a member in the legislature from 2013 to 2017, I served on the House Appropriations Committee, where I was the Democratic Lead for the Department of Health and Human Services. I also served on the Subcommittee for Community Mental Health. In my consulting company, I do represent Detroit Wayne Integrated Health, as well as an autism center, so I understand our mental health and behavioral health needs here in our county, as well as we have a criminal justice complex. I have a bachelor's in criminal justice, and I have experienced contact with the criminal justice system, so I know how individuals are going through and what they're dealing with, and so I would love to serve on that as well to ensure that once that criminal justice complex is built and open, that we are treating all of our residents with respect.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Banks, you will get this question first. Our district faced devastating flooding more than once in the past several years. What can you and the commission do to address that?
Yes, just last year, we experienced several floods because of the rain levels, and first of all, we have to look at our infrastructure. And so I would develop a plan to address our deteriorating infrastructure. In addition to that, when our basements flood, I would make sure that, in the event that our basements flood, I would make sure that there is funding in our budget to provide grants and resources for our residents to be able to improve that and clean up the flooding. I would also address our service lines, as well as making sure that each municipality has financial resources and support from the county, as well as from the federal government to address the flooding issues and their infrastructure concerns. As we know, many of our communities have failing older infrastructures that need to be replaced.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, same question.
Yeah, unfortunately, the county does not have much role in the flooding at all. We do have some interceptor pipes in the ground, but the lines that go to people's houses are not, are not the responsibility of the county. Each local community makes their own decisions on whether they separate sewers or not, and so there is only a very small role for the county. That's more of a local municipal issue, as well as a state issue and a federal issue for providing the proper funding for that. I certainly do lobby on those issues. We are in basically the same precarious spot that we've been in, in Jefferson Chalmers and in Gross Point Park and Gross Point City and elsewhere on the East Side, that we were when the flooding occurred last year. Overall, what we need is a big federal investment in infrastructure because the capacity of the system has not changed since last year.
So that may have led into my next question, although it could be more than flooding. Is there a regional solution to our infrastructure needs? And if so, what would that be, Mr. Colleen?
There are many things that I am in favor of that government does on a regional basis. That has not had much traction here in southeast Michigan. We have the Home Rule in the state constitution, which allows communities to go their own way. We see the fracturing that is going on with the regional bus system as local communities are opting out. I am in favor, and there's been all over the country and all over the world, good examples about how regionalizing systems, which means people have to give up some of their power and some of their power base, where we can provide services on a regional basis, which are cheaper for the taxpayer and also more effective. So I am in favor of pursuing any honest regional effort to handle the water issues.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, same question, please.
Thank you. I believe that we have experimented with a number of regional agreements with our transportation, with our Great Lakes Water Authority. I do believe that one regional aspect we could look at to assist with flooding would be building greener infrastructure, a regional green infrastructure project that would help to address some of the flooding, as well as green rooftops and roofs, and create floodplains and overflow areas for rivers, as well as stormwater runoff pollution. And so those would be some of the areas that I would address the flooding as well.
Thank you. All right, question six, Mr. Banks, you will go first. What are your plans to improve the roads in Wayne County, particularly on the East Side?
Yes, what has been going on to me, in my opinion, we've been putting Band-Aids on our roads, and we've been using a Band-Aid approach, which has caused us to continuously have to address our road conditions. When you look at the weather and our climate that we have here in Michigan, as well as our harsh winters, I would develop a plan to seek out using alternatives than what we use to repair our roads. Other municipalities, counties, and areas use other items besides tire. Some use shredded tires, as well as other items. When you look at, in our winter, we use an excess amount of, excessive amount of salt on our roads, and so it eats up our roads, and so by the time the springtime comes, our roads are crumbling and our infrastructure is crumbling and failing. So I would look at other ways to address the problem, but totally investing the proper financial resources instead of putting Band-Aids on them.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, same question.
Yeah, this is another case where what we really need here is federal action, and I do talk to my federal officials about this. Eighty percent of the money to fix roads in Wayne County starts with the federal government, comes through state government. And also, local elected officials have nothing to say about what roads get fixed where. That's the Federal Aid Committee, made up of public service departments from all of the local communities, the bureaucrats, and I love bureaucrats, that deal with this every day, and they sit and they look at the needs, and they decide which roads are going to get fixed first. What we need is a large influx. It was very disappointing to me that they cut back the federal infrastructure bill by a trillion dollars. Those are monies that we need. If we have the money available through the state of Michigan and we pay our local match, we can get roads fixed, but it's not always going to be the road that's right out in front of people's houses.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, what are your environmental priorities, and how can you enact them?
Well, we used to have an environmental department in the county of Wayne, but now most of what we've done environmentally with air quality and whatnot, we have contracted back to the state of Michigan. I have a long history of involvement in the environmental movement. I was with the Sierra Club for a number of years, has its political chair, and working on those issues in Lansing. What we have, and now the county doesn't even control the water sewage treatment plants. We've turned over that to a consortium in southwest Detroit, or southwest county, where a lot of the local governments have an authority that have jurisdiction over that. But anywhere that I can, we have to, county, county trucks, county cars, we should be looking, county buildings, we should be looking to do as much as we can to reduce the carbon footprint. Stop.
Thank you very much. Mr. Banks, same question.
I would invest in public health projects that would address our environmental pollution. We have a number of polluters on the East Side, in the Detroit area, along the Jefferson Chalmers area. We have, just north of there, we have the Chrysler plant that has been ticketed by Eagle because of pollution and the odors that have come from their facilities. And so I would develop a plan to invest in health projects to where, when our environmental pollution rises to a certain level, the community is made aware by a siren or something so that people can know that they need to, you know, protect themselves, cover themselves. But I would also develop a plan to make sure that it's appropriated correctly to address the concerns, as well as keeping our water pollution clean and our Great Lakes, as well as building climate resilience as well.
Thank you very much. We now turn to the economy. So recently, the Fed put the brakes on interest rates in order to slow growth. How will a weakening economy impact the commission's work, and what challenges will it pose to Wayne County? Mr. Banks, this is yours first.
Oh, when we look at the economy and we look at interest rates, we are looking at mortgage rates going up, as well as we've seen recently where the housing market was just skyrocketing, but now with mortgage rates going up, we see people not buying as many homes, as well as we see that people are not buying and/or selling, and so that will cause a problem as it relates to our county's employees. We need to also make sure that we are providing our county employees with a salary that will give them a living wage, but also we need to look at how we can invest in our county, in our economy, and in our residents, so that our economy can build and boost back up.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, same question.
That is a deep economic question that you're asking there, and as I follow this in the media, there is no agreement among the so-called experts in terms of what the effects of this are going to be. And I'm not going to pretend that in my seat on the county commission, I have some magic that I can lean on to say what the real effect is going to be. I will say anything that affects interest rate is going to hurt the, is going to hurt the county as they go up. And so what that effect is going to be, I think everybody right now is playing a guessing game, playing a waiting game. I'm in no position to, to make some sort of prediction on, on what the real effect is going to be.
All right. As we go to question nine then, Mr. Colleen, is the budget for Wayne County adequate for its current needs? And if cuts must be made, where can we make them?
It is not adequate for the needs of the county. As I said, you know, we are just getting back to revenues that we used to get in 2008. The county is dependent a lot on property tax revenues, and when the housing market collapsed, our revenues collapsed. We are slowly crawling, growing out of that hole. Just last year was the first time that we had the same revenues coming in as we had in 2008. So it is not adequate to provide the services out there, and you can see it across the county, how services have been cut back and pared down, that we don't have enough people. Both of us and here have re-referved to how badly this has hurt county employees. Just in Audit Committee today, the county treasurer told us that he can't hire a deputy treasurer. Well, how, well, because the, the wage, the wage rates that we're offering are not high enough, and this is going on all over the county. So we need to invest in employees as our revenues increase.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, same question.
Thank you. I would agree, it's not adequate. While the county has had a balanced budget with somewhat of a surplus, because of the low and failing tax base, we now see that the tax base is increasing, but because of the market, the housing market, our tax base and our taxes were decreased. And so as a result, we have retirees from the county who have been needing a raise. I do know that the commission took up a budget item last year, a year before, to give the retirees, I think, a $10 or $15 raise to help, to assist with their healthcare. And so we need to really be looking at the budget to make sure that our retirees are taken care of, our county employees are making a living wage where they can take care of their families, but also investing into the areas that matter most to our communities, as well as our residents, so people can have an improved quality of life.
Thank you. Now, what could the commission do to increase job opportunities for your constituents?
So when you look at the number of jobs that the county has out there, I think the county could do a better job at messaging itself and selling itself. Most people that I've talked to has been unaware of the number of jobs that the county has there. So first of all, it's messaging what opportunities are available, but then also, I believe that the county could provide some type of job training and job workforce development programs that would get people qualified and ready to attain and retain jobs where they can make a living wage.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, same question, please.
Yeah, thank you. Through the money that we're getting from the American Recovery Act, the county executive definitely is pointing towards economic development as an area that we need to invest in. And so I'm glad to see that what we used to have a decade or so ago, one-stop business center to help small businesses in the county develop their business plans and grow and learn how to be businesses, that is going to come back. And the county is making other significant investments in projects, and that, that needs to continue. So again, what the county can do in this area is limited in scope because we're limited in money, but I do like the direction that we're going in, and I do think we're doing about as much as we can when it comes to the jobs outside of government jobs in the county.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, how well is our community meeting the needs of low-income residents, and what more, if anything, needs to be done?
Well, I think that is a problem that is as old as government is old, and so low-income residents get the short end of the stick, and they always have. I pay particular attention to that, the kind of help that people need. We don't have enough money, for instance, to help all of the people that have lit paint in their homes, right? There's not enough healthcare, primary healthcare out there. So these are issues that, there's no magic wand, that they just have to be worked on, they have to be chipped away at, and it has to be more of a focus to say, we're going to be helping the least among us, you know, the idea of a rising tide. And so, yes, we don't have a ton of resources to do this, but every chance, opportunity we have, we need to take that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, same question, please.
Thank you. Thank you. No, the community is not meeting the needs. When we look at the lack of access to quality healthcare as well as the lack of quality produce in many of our communities outside of the points, that is a problem. We also have a ton of older homes where those people who may be poor or financially challenged don't have access to resources to repair those homes. There are very limited grants available. And as a result, the poor is being penalized double, double by receiving blight tickets as well as our community sometimes is not the most welcoming. When we look at our school system and how renters are treated. And when we look at a number of things that has taken place, we have not met the needs of the community, especially the poor.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, you will begin this question. Do you see a role for the county in addressing the overwhelming issue of the opioid crisis?
Absolutely, I do. I see the county playing a huge role. But when it addresses the opioid addiction, I think we need to make sure that we address all drug addictions. Because what has plagued our community, our country, our state is when blacks had a crack epidemic, they were criminalized. And now that others have opioid addictions, we find money and programs to assist them and they're not criminalized. And so our county could provide resources and treatment programs that would address all substance abuse and treat people fairly and human and make sure that we get them to a stage of recovery.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, same question.
Wayne County did participate in a suit against the drug manufacturers for their kind of criminal behavior in the distributing of opiates out there. And we were successful and we got a settlement out of it. You know, a lot of the questions that we've had here, again, what I'm focused on is our job in the county charter. We do have a health department that can do some educating out there for people. But across the county, substance use disorders handled through the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network. And they have the funding to deal with those issues. And that funding mostly overwhelmingly comes through the state of Michigan. So we do have a role in education in our county health department. We do need to beef up our health department. But we don't carry the big stick in terms of doing, you know, something big about the opioid crisis. We can do education. Outside of that, it's other units of government that carry the role.
Thank you. And I do think the community needs to know these things. Question thirteen, Mr. Colleen, you'll get it first. What mental health services are in the jurisdiction of the commission?
Well, very little at this point. The county used to have a mental health agency as a part of the county. And that was taken away from us by an act of the legislature about eight years ago, where we created a freestanding authority away from the county. I was appointed the central role to get the legislation that removed it from the county and set it up as an independent authority. The money, the betting money at the time was that it was going to be privatized by the state. That was their goal. We successfully avoided that. We don't need for-profit health plans who don't know how to deliver mental health services and be in control of the three point five billion that comes to the state of Michigan from the feds to run mental health. So we do have a five million dollar payment annually that the county makes to the mental health authority. But overwhelmingly, the job of providing mental health services is run through what is called the Wynn, the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, similar question, but perhaps what would you improve on that?
Thank you. As I've stated, I would increase funding for mental health services. As has been stated already, we do not have mental health facilities. There was a time we had Lafayette Clinic. There was a time there were other facilities that were in Detroit and the vicinity. We don't have them anymore. And so individuals who have mental health issues and concerns oftentimes use our emergency rooms for treatment. However, we've moved to an authority, which is the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Authority. And they provide services that include adult mental illness, autism services, intellectual and developmental disabilities, as well as substance use disorders. And so I would invest more into those services, but also invest more funding into education to erase the stigmas that are associated with mental health, especially in the African-American community where there is a stigma around mental health. And so I would make sure that our funding levels are appropriate so our residents can get the services that they need and desire.
Thank you. And Mr. Banks, you will get this next question first. What kinds of policies, if any, will you pursue to promote social and racial justice in our community?
Yes. So racial justice requires that we address economic justice, environmental justice and equality for the LGBTQ community. Our communities of color have been under systemic attack for generations. The Flint Water Crisis, emergency managers, environmental spills, long-term efforts to suppress the vote, and the list goes on. This is a problem we all need to take a role in addressing. I will be intentional about ensuring contracts and employment are more in line with the demographics of our county and our district. I will connect known practices of racial injustices throughout the country to ensure we don't follow suit with such practices. I will document the harm of how past decisions have led to the detriment of black and brown homeownership to change our trajectory. I will actively communicate with our residents and to ensure that equity and inclusion is included while I serve in the, on the county commission.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, same question.
I referred to earlier that I authored the Human Rights Ordinance for the county because the state of Michigan law on civil rights was done in the seventies and there was no protections for the LGBTQ community in that law. So I am interested in equal protection under the law and anything that we can do with county ordinances that can fill the gaps that are in laws elsewhere. I also think in our contracting, our public contracting, that we are making sure that minority firms get a little bit of a leg up when they're bidding on jobs. They already get some under our procurement ordinance. So, but I think the other thing is the bully pulpit. Again, there's only so much that we can do as a county. But I think as elected leaders, we do need to use our bully pulpit and work with other levels of government for a more honest playing field out there for everybody.
Thank you. There are just two questions left and they're both related to communication. So, Mr. Colleen, you will go first. Is transparency an issue in our county's governance? Why or why not?
It absolutely is. And I referred to the Ethics Ordinance earlier. And and we are learning from the discussion up in Lansing that Michigan, the state of Michigan has about the weakest ethics laws of any state in the, in the country. And things like getting public documents through FOIA requests, Freedom of Information Act. It's just really bad. I did sit on the committee that drafted the first Ethics Ordinance for the county. I know the weaknesses in there. A lot of folks were in that committee talking about, well, whatever the state did, we'll do too. And so this is why I want a thorough review of our ethics laws, which will be what governs both public officials and the day-to-day bureaucrats. So, no, we can do much, much better with ethics laws in this county. We don't need to copy the state.
Okay. And Mr. Banks, same question.
We indeed need to strengthen our transparency laws in our county, but not just our county, but in our state. While serving in the legislature, I did co-sponsor a set of bills that dealt with improving our transparency laws as well as making sure that our residents were aware of any type of conflicts of interest as it relates to elected officials. Michigan remains only one of two states that don't require our electeds to provide financial statements to divulge any type of conflict of interest. The county commission is a part-time role. And so there are county commissioners who have other employment and contracts and sit on boards where the boards receive paid stipends. And so we need to strengthen our transparency laws.
Thank you. And our final question is, outside of this forum, of course, how will you learn what's on the minds of your residents? And Mr. Banks, you are first.
While serving in the legislature, one thing I was very big on was constituent services. I held coffee hours twice a month, one in Grosse Pointe Woods at the Big Boy and the other in Detroit at the McDonald's, as well as every other month, I had an evening town hall around an issue. Since leaving office, I have continued to stay in communication with the residents in the community by hosting a number of events, one being voting while black, talking about the significance of the black vote and making sure they're understanding voting rights and having access to the ballot. But I will also continue those coffee hours as well as I am speaking to residents every day and knocking doors and attending community meetings. And so I am hearing concerns from not just the Grosse Pointers, but Harper Woods and as well as Detroiters. And I will continue to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Colleen, how will you learn what's on the minds of residents?
Well, you wait for this question to the end and you take a big chunk out of my closing statement. So if it's okay with you, so I don't repeat myself, I will save it for my closing statement where I directly address that exact question.
Well, then, Mr. Colleen, we are now turning to our closing statement. And as we do this, you will be first. Remember, each of you will have two minutes in order to present your case. We, again, Mr. Colleen's going first because the order is reversed from the opening statements.
Well, again, thank you to the Detroit and Grosse Pointe Legal Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. One of my main focuses of my tenure in office has been in the area of physical and mental health for our citizens. Wayne County is weighted, is rated the worst county in the state for health, particularly for our un- and underinsured residents. I have worked to expand the safety net and to bring more primary clinics directly into underserved neighborhoods. We must make more progress in the area of racial disparities in healthcare. Another important part of the job is to be available and responsive to citizens. Pre-pandemic, I held four monthly chats with the commission spread geographically around the district. In addition, community leaders, city managers, number of elected officials have my cell number and they use it. My office takes pride in responding to the phone calls and emails that come in to help constituents with their questions and complaints with government. I am a lifelong resident of my beloved east side, born and raised on the Lower East Side. Prior to my county service, I spent fourteen years teaching science to the freshmen at Denny. I have owned a home in the Kelly Seven Mile area for thirty-one years. It has been nothing but a joy to represent this district. I offer citizens a knowledgeable, hardworking and independent commissioner. It is not lost on me who I go to work for each and every day, that being the residents of District One. I humbly ask for your vote for Tim Colleen in the August second primary election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, your closing statement.
Thank you for this opportunity. I have thoroughly enjoyed the questions. As I stated earlier, when every member of our society has an opportunity to contribute to the conversation, we have the ability to create policy that emphasizes with all. We have a very diverse community here. We have five Grosse Points, Harper Woods, and a portion of the northeast side of Detroit. It is imperative that we not leave anyone behind. It is imperative that we not leave any issues behind. I understand the importance of engaging the office of the citizen. If elected, I will work to ensure that equity and inclusion are present and to afford each citizen a better quality of life. Together, we will address the issues that matter most to you, including addressing our seawall issue properly, increasing funding for mental health, improving our failing infrastructure, stopping property tax over assessments, creating jobs at a living wage and establishing community dog parks. I have been endorsed by a number of advocacy groups with our recent Supreme Court ruling with Roe v. Wade. Planned Parenthood has just endorsed me as a fighter and a champion for women and women's reproductive rights. There are some issues that our community will agree on. And there are some issues that are only community-specific. But we must have, and I commit to being a representative for all people, black and white, Grosse Pointe, Harper Woods and Detroit. I'm Brian Banks and I'm humbly asking for your support in this August second primary. Brian Banks for Commissioner, Bank on Banks.
Thank you. And now we wish to thank the candidates, the forum officials and all of you for participating by submitting questions. If you still have questions for the candidates, we encourage you to contact them directly. And now I will turn the forum back to Grosse Pointe League Vice President, Mary Zeller.
Thank you, Sue. And thank you especially to tonight's participants for their commitment to public service in our community. A link to this forum will be available on the Detroit League's website and YouTube and on the Grosse Pointe League's Facebook website and YouTube prior to the primary. The candidates have also answered questions about their candidacy on vote411.org. The online Vote411 voter guide covers this and other races, giving you a comprehensive picture of the people running on your own ballot. You can access Vote411 at vote411.org or the Grosse Pointe League of Women Voters website. Election Day is Tuesday, August second. Polls will open at seven AM and close at eight PM. Michigan offers voting by absentee ballot for any reason. You can register, verify your voting registration status or request an absentee ballot by calling your city clerk, goingtovote411.org or accessing the Secretary of State website. We strongly encourage you to vote early by absentee ballot and return your ballot well before Election Day. If you mail your ballot, allow two weeks for it to reach your city clerk. Thank you and good evening.